The October twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Long Hill Planning Board is called to order at.
Seven thirty-five.
Seven thirty-four. Can we have the announcements, please?
Yes. Number one, call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel newspaper, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Number two, standard board procedures. Any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Number three, meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the planning board not to continue any matter past ten thirty P M at any regular or special meeting of the board, unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting to a later specified cutoff time. Electronic devices. All in attendance are asked to mute cell phones or any electronic devices as to not interrupt with the proceedings. Pledge of allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Committeeman Ray?
Present.
Committeeman Verlezza is absent. Ms. Dill is excused tonight. Mr. Hans?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Malinowski?
Here.
Mr. File is excused tonight. Chairman, Vice Chairman Richardson is excused tonight. Chairman Sandow?
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Just barely, I want to thank the members who came out at the last minute in response to my panicked phone calls today. In order to achieve this quorum, many members dropped away because of the fact that the hearing for Gates Avenue is going to be delayed until December twentieth. And so if you're here for that hearing, there is no reason for you to stay. We'll get to the formalities in a few minutes. We're going to make this a very brief meeting. And so I'm going to skip a few items on the agenda which are not relevant to getting out of here. First item is the application for twenty-one dash twenty-six P for the G two development group on Gates Avenue, and I do not see the applicant here. The applicant has asked that we carry to December twentieth, which requires that we establish a special meeting for the twentieth. And Counselor, would you give us some more language, please?
Sure. Well, the special, the applicant has requested that with the understanding that the applicant would pay a special meeting fee, and that the time of decision by the board would be extended until the end of the year. That date again is Wednesday, December twenty, seven thirty P. I'm sorry, Tuesday, December twenty, seven thirty P M, the same location. But first, the board would have to decide whether we're going to establish that as a special meeting date, and then if so, we would then address the request to carry to that date.
Could I have a motion, please, to establish a special meeting on December twentieth?
I don't mind either way.
Yeah.
I'm here, so it doesn't bother me.
You're going to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to do it on the twenty, December twentieth.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
We should take a roll call. Should we take a roll call?
Since it may not be unanimous.
Yep.
Do I need to, from this one? This is for Gates?
Yes.
Yeah, we're, given that it's a quorum, that we need a quorum to conduct the business. It's my opinion that you can vote on the carrying, because it's not a substantive matter involving the merits of the application, whether, you know, the special meeting date and the carry date, of course, you cannot participate in any way, shape, or form in the actual hearing.
You could vote to create the special meeting even though you don't have to come.
Okay. And in fact, you would be required, you would be required to recuse, but yeah.
Why can't we do it on the thirteenth?
Thirteenth is, the thirteenth I'm reserving for the master plan discussions, which, which we are going to start in November, and we want to get those finished by the end of the year, so I'm going to hold that date open because I expect a lot of discussion.
You expecting that also on the twenty-second of November?
The twenty-second of November is the first of the master plan discussions, and I expect that to continue to December thirteenth.
And we can't use November eighth? That's too early?
Say again?
We can't use November eighth?
For the applicant?
Master plan is not ready to be on November eighth.
I'm not talking master plan, I'm talking applicant.
The applicant is not ready either. They requested either December or January.
The applicant apparently wants, I, oh, can't talk about it with Brendan here.
I'll leave if you like, if you want, I mean.
No.
No. Okay.
Suffice to say, I think this is the best juggling. We could have a special meeting for the master plan, but I'd rather keep the master plan in two contiguous meetings.
What was the date in January again?
The Jan, the January date is January twenty-fourth.
I can't do it on the tenth.
Now, we generally, we tried to stay away from having an applicant on.
On re-arg night, right.
Yeah, yeah. I, I.
Okay.
Motion was out there in seconds.
Motion to have, hold a special meeting.
On December twentieth.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Hans?
Yes.
Mr. Malinowski?
Yes.
Committeeman Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
If I vote no, am I? I'm only voting on the date. I'm not voting on hearing, correct?
It purely has to do with whether or not we're going to conduct a special meeting on December twentieth and nothing else.
Thank you. No.
Chairman Sandow?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, the next motion is to carry the application to that special meeting.
And again, that was by request of the applicant, understanding special meeting fee, December twenty, twenty twenty-two, seven thirty P M, the same location.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ms., Committeeman Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hans?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Malinowski?
Yes.
Chairman Sandow?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and the announcement's been made for all the members of the public who are here this evening.
I'm going to skip the meeting minutes. The schedule of future meetings, November eighth is to be determined, probably full of committee reports, but I will talk to the committees between now and then. November twenty-eighth and December tenth, or what is the first meeting, December eighth?
November twenty-second, you mean.
Yeah, whatever. The last meeting in November and the first meeting in December are for master plan.
That's major.
And that's the schedule of future meetings. Uh, we have, we have an ordinance, the Outdoor Music Noise Ordinance four ninety-nine dash twenty-two. After a good deal of discussion at the last few meetings, the, the generic response of the Township Committee is your ordinance is not inconsistent with the master plan, and we see no harm in your passing it even though the Planning Board intends to do a more thorough noise ordinance for you in the spring. And you all have seen a copy of that resolution, which Deborah has to send off tonight so that the Township Committee can adopt the ordinance tomorrow. Are there any questions or discussions about the resolution that you have read?
Just a spreading typo situation. On the first paragraph, the last sentence, it says the master, master plan documents do make any specific recommendation. I assume that says do not make any specific recommendations.
Master plan documents do make?
I'm, I'm sorry, oh, there it is, the master plan documents.
And it should say what? Do not?
I assume, the way it's written, it sounds like do, do not, or does not, or it does make. It says however, places boundary restrictions. I assume means do not. I don't remember that being in anyhow music.
I think that's a, that may be a do not, Mr. Chairman, but.
I'm sorry, David, I just pulled it up.
That's fine. The last sentence in the first paragraph starts, the master plan documents do make any specific recommendations, then goes on however. Is it does not, or does make, or does not make?
Yeah, you're right. The word not should be in there.
Okay, I'll add it.
Okay.
And there is a typo in the middle of the second paragraph. Business owners is two words, not one.
Okay.
And we were good to let it go with a nine to nine blanket hours? We were comfortable with that where we began?
Yeah, all, all the Towns ordinance does is sets nine o'clock as a limit.
Yeah.
And that will suffice for the winter because nobody's doing outdoor dining for the rest of the year anyway.
Um, so the Sterling Hotel has a zoning board of adjustments that allows them to play music till ten o'clock. And they did have a band there on Saturday evening till ten o'clock. Did anyone have a chance to go by and?
The, any, any existing variance would, would.
So that would supersede over the ordinance of nine o'clock? Okay.
Yeah, this will only apply to any new authority that is requested.
Okay, so just for your awareness, I did stop by, and I did go onto Railroad Avenue and listen from the street. Uh, the band Missing Pieces, very nice sounding band, they played good rock and roll, so I thoroughly enjoyed hearing the music, but I will say I could hear the music, and I went all the way down, I walked down four houses, and you could hear that music coming through. They did it in the Beer Garden or the Grove, and they had a, a tent with, I want to say one side was open towards River, uh, Railroad Avenue, and I did drive all the way down to the Sterling Auto Shop, and I could still hear that music clearly.
No doubt.
So.
But the zoning board did grant the variance. I think it was about five or six years ago that the Sterling Hotel was in there with a whole rash of stuff.
They did. I also note that we do have a, a bit of a noise ordinance that talks about reasonable tones. And so I did, and I, this is not a specific or calibrated phone, but I did pull an app to just kind of get an idea, and it did exceed.
If it's okay with you, Tom, I'd like to hold this discussion at the November eighth meeting in greater length.
I'm just making it as a point of reference for now, so when I go back and listen prior to our next meeting, I'll have this as a tickler for a reminder.
Okay.
Okay?
You can't leave this as a cliffhanger. Exceeded what?
It went to seventy-two.
Above sixty-five.
Above sixty-five, that is correct.
Thank you.
And that was from the street. That was not in the parking lot. I was on the street.
And just on, just off an app from your cell phone?
Off an app on my cell phone.
Right.
Which is not calibrated, so it could be wrong, but just something to ballpark. But the music was good. Good band.
Okay, we, we need to vote to authorize the Board Secretary to transmit this letter to the Township Committee as corrected. Can I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And before I take the roll, I will just make a point of clarification with the chairman. It will not be sent tonight because the, our clerk does not look at things when she's not in the office. It'll be sent in the morning.
Say that again, please.
The clerk will not be looking at this tonight, so I'm not sending it tonight. I'll send it in the morning.
Well, whatever. Whatever, as long as she gets it before the meeting tomorrow.
She will get it first thing in the morning. Okay, Mr. Malinowski?
Sure she's expecting it.
She is, yes. Mr. Malinowski?
Yes.
Mr. Hans?
Yes.
Committeeman Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Sandow?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the, we talked about the future meetings, we talked about the ordinance. Uh, is there any, is there any other old or new business that we want to, or that we need to conduct tonight?
I'm, sorry, I was going to ask, what is, why are we not going through the minutes, and why are we carrying the minutes to our next meeting?
Because I don't think anybody read them. I know I haven't.
Oh, I did, then I have one point about it, but.
If you've all read it and are prepared to vote, I'll, we can do that, otherwise.
But you've already stated you're not prepared.
I'd like a little more time myself.
Okay, okay.
I, I'll make my one point, so you can think about it. Dennis, if you don't mind, I hope to, on the October eleventh. We did actually vote to send that resolution to the Township Committee for four nine six twenty-two.
Four nine six.
Yeah, we voted for it. I think the minutes should reflect the vote.
Four nine six, uh, okay. I don't, I don't remember taking a vote on that one.
We did. I just think it should be recorded.
Okay. No, you're right. I don't.
We voted and we sent it back. It's not, not consistent, and we also gave recommendations.
Correct.
Just wait a minute, hold on, because didn't we do that in September?
Be the one or the other.
Right.
Wait, wait, wait.
I like that.
Oh, four ninety, that was four ninety-eight, and then four ninety, oh my goodness, I'm giving them all. Okay, I will amend that and send it.
Just to check, you remember. It wasn't unanimous.
Yeah, that could probably use another sentence, that in fact, we did agree to transmit that. You go, you got draft in there.
And Deb, just on the second page also, right, the paragraph right before number eight, upon motion made by Mr. File and seconded by Mr. Malinowski?
Mm-hmm.
For the October eleventh meeting?
Oh.
Yeah, I would have had a long distance second for that.
Yeah, that's a long distance.
All right, if anybody else has corrections to their draft minutes, send them to Deborah, and we'll talk about them at the next meeting. In the interest of brevity, I will ask Mr. Malinowski to make the next motion.
Uh, motion. No, I have one more thing. Were you, well, that was a, a motion to adjourn?
It was gonna be.
Just before.
On the brakes.
I've been, I've been asked by some resi, a number of residents, and I know your opinion on it, Dennis, but nevertheless, I feel duty bound to bring it forward. A number of residents have asked if we can do Zoom, if we can have some kind of Zoom component to the meetings in order to increase participation, and so I bring it forward to the, to the committee.
And I echo that. I think we should be using Zoom.
I, I'm fine. I seem to work with the Township Committee while I listen to the audience.
We got, we resolved that problem, right, with the echoing? That's now resolved? Okay, because I know that was in two meetings where that continued, and even, it wasn't even just limited to Zoom. It was even affecting the Long Hill T, uh, TV broadcast, so.
Um, Board Attorney Warner, do you want to comment on any of that?
The, the, there's the, there's the legal, which is my purview, which is the, what can we do? And then, to the extent my purview extends beyond that to recommendations as to what we should do, I can add that to it. The can is we have the legal authority as a land use board still to either have hearings or meetings, which the most difficult part for either a hybrid or a full remote is the public hearings on the applications, a good number, you know, a good amount of what we do. Um, we can do them either solely in person, solely remotely, or the hybrid of both. Um, that's the could. If I'm afforded the opportunity to give a recommendation as to the should, being the board attorney and wanting to protect the board and, and, and the due process that everyone is entitled to in the context of a public hearing, there are technological difficulties with remote hearings. There, in my opinion, are even more technological difficulties in hybrid hearings, because invariably, people who are participating remotely, even if they don't have technical difficulties, they cannot participate in a quasi judicial hearing the same way that they could when they are here. For example, you cannot necessarily see everyone, hear everything, read everything, et cetera. So, and, and including seeing people's faces, for example, for board members, you are making credibility determinations. Literally body movements even come into play. Um, so the easy answer for the attorney who lives in the ivory tower proverbially, uh, the, is to say that the, the should or preference is for solely in person ideally. That said, it's, the board has the discretion, given that legally you could do solely remote, solely in person, or the hybrid.
Do you think it's a decision of the individual, though? If they know it's hybrid, they accept it's not the same as being in, but it's something that they choose to do, so.
There's not a lot of law on it yet.
Mm-hmm.
The, so, yes, it's, as I said, I, I, in an ideal world, there might be, you know, ideal preferences.
Okay, we vote, we voted on this back in the spring, and the zoning board voted identically. That both the boards agreed to, to hold in-person meetings in the courtroom, period. Now, if we're going to reverse that, I would suggest the courteous thing to do is to get a majority of the zoning board on board so that they can make the same determination, and they've got a lot more hearings scheduled in the next few months than we have. You know, my personal opinion is hold the meetings in the courtroom, but I'll go with the majority, and I would suggest that we use the opportunity of our next meeting to discuss this further.
When we have more members present.
When we have more members present, hopefully.
I think that's fair. I mean, personally, I was against it, hybrid, for all the obvious reasons. But I haven't seen the Township Committee meeting. Um, if people recognize it's their choice, is it not necess, is a, if they really want to be here and they feel them, then be here. Don't, just because you haven't been, it can't become a negative to the process.
Yeah, there should be some kind of disclaimer if you're in the extended courtroom coming in virtually. The limitations are you might have a problem with your Wi-Fi.
Or you may not see the faces, or you may not see something, you may not get everything, the nuances.
And it's just the voice that you hear, right?
But that's your decision, so don't come, you can't come back and complain about that decision.
Yeah, I see.
That's fair.
Steve?
I, I, I would just, understood. I would just point out that to the, there are regulations that regulate how we conduct remote or hybrid, uh, public hearings, and even the, uh, the Department of Community Affairs and Division of Local Government Services in those regulations recognize a distinction between governing body and other bodies' meetings, which are public meetings, um, and they make the distinction between the zoning board and the portions of the meetings that we have that are hearings on development applications, recognizing that those are quasi judicial hearings and require, uh, they're a different animal, if you will, than a, a public meeting. So there are, and there are municipalities where by governing body meetings and other board meetings that don't have quasi judicial public hearings are held remotely or in a hybrid fashion, yet the zoning board and planning board meetings with the hearings on development applications that are quasi judicial hearings are held in person. But there, there, the gamut is out there still.
Are any of your other boards quasi, uh, hybrid, rather?
We, uh, right now, no, I don't believe I have any that are true hybrid anymore. They are either, I have two that are still remote in their entirety, and the rest are in person. Some have streaming or other mechanisms by which people can watch, but not participate.
or other mechanisms by which people can watch, but not participate, uh, in the quasi judicial hearings because of the concerns with respect to technological and other limitations.
And they're not being challenged by any AHA or the ones that are strictly in the courtroom? Are they being challenged by those that have, uh, by individuals or residents that have challenges and limitations?
No one has brought such a challenge yet.
Because I know that when we've been in total Zoom, we've had residents say, when are we coming back into the courtroom? Right? So it's one or the other. So you're gonna make one half happy and the other side not so happy. You do the other way, it flips. I'm an advocate of the hybrid model. Uh, I deal with it, uh, day to day in my, in my line of work. Uh, it works well. We know that there are the limitations. Uh, I, I think it presents a bit of a challenge for the planning board when the township committee is able to do hybrid, uh, but understanding that their sessions are different from our sessions. So that has to be, uh, there, there's an education there, right, that people need to be aware of. Um, so I'll table my thoughts.
Yeah.
Well, the township committee has not had a hybrid meeting since the disasters at the end of September. Both the township committee and the planning board, the last meeting in September was awful, and the, uh, and neither, no board has tried to hold a hybrid since then. So we need proof that whatever that problem is was fixed, and, um...
That'll be tomorrow night.
Huh?
Tomorrow night.
No, it's Zoom tomorrow night.
There's no hybrid tomorrow night.
Oh, it's, oh, it's Zoom all?
No, it's just Zoom tomorrow night.
How is it?
My bad, sir.
We could use this as an opportunity. This was a great opportunity.
Okay, let's, uh, let's postpone this to a, and hold a final, final, final vote at the next meeting, which will be in the courtroom.
Do you mind if I just make that one back to the disclaimer type? Can we just, and just make sure that there's nothing negative that can be said to anybody about if we did do hybrid, whether it be disclaimer or awareness of somebody that they can't come back and say, oh, I did, I was.
Yeah, good luck.
I had some problems. I didn't see something. I didn't quite hear something. That can come, you can't, and if, maybe that's a reason for me then to say, forget hybrid.
I can tell you that certainly we could do a disclaimer, and I can tell you certainly that I don't know the extent, if at all, that it would, you know, avoid, uh, a viable challenge, you know, but, uh, I don't know that it would hurt.
I, I could see a challenge coming. Uh, we won't, we won't be able to, you know, cross all the Ts and dot all the Is. Someone's gonna miss the little J, you know, and he gets a little dot, too.
Yeah, well, then that may be reasonable to do it.
Yeah, fair enough. But as long as we come back with a concrete decision and how we got to that decision, I'm okay with whatever comes out the backside.
Are we done with that discussion?
No.
Anyone have any other old or new business?
Or the next meeting.
Mr. Malinowski?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Who in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?